Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Ken Demirz.
Here.
Robert De Sina. Anthony De Bona. Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik. Denise Russ.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
I'll hand the show over to you guys, Chief and Deputy. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of Town Council. Deputy Chief Dominguez and I are grateful to be here this evening to present the fiscal year 2324 budget to the council. There's a lot to digest on this particular slide, but this reflects our, the overall numbers we're presenting to the council this evening. As you probably know, the Police Department consists of six separate budgets. They are all listed on the left side at the arrows. Those being the administrative budget, the patrol detective budget, the maintenance and support budget, the traffic budget, the animal control budget, and the communications budget. On the far right, you see the numbers as the actual difference in last year's budget compared to the proposed budget we're presenting to you this evening. As a whole, the budget has a 7.6% increase, which accounts for $447,639. And I'll go into detail as to where those differences are coming about. In totality, and mainly because all of the building costs are extracted from the Police Department and handled through Town Hall, the Police Department's budgets, 90% of our total figure is all personnel expenses directly related to salary and benefits. Only 10% of our budget, which is about just under $600,000, is everything else, from ammunition to police equipment to vehicles, et cetera. So moving into the first budget, which is the administrative budget, this is reflecting a 6.4% increase, which is $38,346. The majority of that increase is accounted for through a 2.25% pay increase, which is contractual for our UPSU union members, which are our records clerks and our administrative assistant. Furthermore, our crossing guards are going to be getting an increase in pay due to the minimum wage going up in January. We did include funding in our executive training line item for the deputy chief to attend an executive training, a week-long executive training session through the Police Executive Research Forum, which is a highly regarded training for chiefs of police to attend. It would be, you know, excellent for the deputy chief to be able to attend that training and bring what she learns back to our department. Furthermore, we did just recently sign new agreements with Axon to refresh all of the dash cameras in our fleet, which will be a five-year contract. We also re-signed for our body camera contract. Our body cameras just recently got refreshed, and we have a new five-year contract with Axon for our body cameras, as well as a new system for our interview recording, our kind of interview interrogation room. We have recording equipment in there for interviews. All of those items are statutorily mandated by the state of Connecticut. So we must have dash cameras in the cruiser, we must have body cameras, and we must have an interview room recording system. So all three of those right now are aging, so we've refreshed our contract with Axon for all new equipment and a five-year maintenance agreement on them. Any questions on the administrative budget before we move on to the patrol detective The patrol detective budget accounts for the largest piece of the pie as far as our overall budget numbers are concerned, and that's primarily due to the fact that the salaries and other fringe benefits for all of our police union members are accounted for in this particular budget. We're looking at an 8.2% increase in this budget, which reflects $349,092. The, that particular number I just provided to you accounts for a requested two additional patrol officers. We are currently staffed at 40 sworn, and I would like to get to 43. My original proposal was 43. The town manager did say we should probably just ask for two at this time. We'll leave it to the council to see as you feel fit. Forty, I mean, ultimately, I'd love to see this department at 46, but we need to, you know, go gradually here. At 40 sworn, we're, we're at a ratio of about 1.6 officers per 1,000 residents. The FBI is reporting that in the northeast of the United States, that towns the size of 10,000 to 25,000 in population have an average of 1.8 to 1.9 officers per 1,000 residents. That's not what they're recommending, that's simply what does exist at this current time. So we're under that. If we get up to 43 sworn, we would be at 1.8 officers per 1,000 residents, which is about average for towns the size of Watertown. Each officer accounts for about $81,390 of the operating budget. That is a, that's salary and uniform costs. So why more officers? We currently have a minimum staffing per shift of three patrol officers and a sergeant to cover a town that's close to 30 square miles with hundreds of miles of roadway and a call volume between 15,000 and 20,000 case numbers per year. That's stretching to three officers that are on the road pretty thin and leaves us fairly ill-equipped to handle a lot of the traffic complaints that come in from our citizens as they're usually going from call to call for service rather than being able to handle proactive police work such as doing radar, watching stop signs and traffic lights for safety violations. Having the extra officers would provide us some bench players on the shift that we could assign to those types of details. Furthermore, on our evening shift, which is our busiest shift, I would love to get to the point where we have enough staffing to increase the minimum staffing on that shift to having four patrol officers at all times rather than just three. Being able to increase the size of our department also offers more specialized assignments to officers such as participating in regional task forces. It'd be able to allow us to continue the school resource officer program that we have one at the high school and at the middle school. And oftentimes, we need to assign an officer to a lot of administrative task work, which has really amplified in the last number of years, including things like accreditation and other transparency-related and reporting laws that have come through legislation such as the Police Accountability Bill. Of notable interest in this particular budget is that our police union contract just got signed within the last couple of months. That, so this budget reflects two years' worth of payroll raises that go retroactive back to July of, gosh, what was it, '21, I think, '21. So last year's budget did not reflect any raises whatsoever because the contract was still under negotiation. So that is, that accounts for approximately 6% in payroll raises for 38 sworn members of the department. That contract also came with some compressions in our payroll steps as well as increases in our educational incentive, shift differential, uniform allowance. Each of those items have all increased, and that's reflective in this particular budget. We also increased our overtime, overtime line item by 3%, which is the raise that takes effect July 1st, as well as the holiday line item here, which is the cost that it takes to pay the officers for the holiday pay, which is contractual. That went up 3% as well. Any questions on the patrol budget? Mr. Lafferty?
Yeah, now, what would happen if they passed that bill where they're gonna, they want to take the police officers out of the schools? Would you still be short of officers?
So though, if police officers came out of the schools, they would be reassigned back to patrol, and the answer to your question is that there would be more bench players on patrol. It would, it would boost our numbers in patrol. Would I say, do we still need them? My answer would, of course, be yes. I would love to have them, but that, you know, in effect, that would be four extra police officers on patrol rather than two. I'm actually testifying tomorrow against that bill, so hopefully it doesn't pass. Any questions on the patrol detective budget?
With the union contracts and them going back two years, the wages get adjusted for their normal wages plus overtime and any other hourly wages they get with the contract.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The retroactive pay with the new contract, that includes like overtime pay and stuff, they also get increases through that.
So...
Yeah, the hourly rate increased so that their overtime rate then increased because per hour they're gonna be making more, is that the question?
Well, it's more the retro.
The retro, correct. When they got retro, they got it for...
The, the retro would have included the pay raise that got negotiated for July 1st, 2021, but that wouldn't be reflected in this budget. Our maintenance and support budget is one of our smaller budgets and has a lot, there's no personnel costs that are involved in this budget, it's all equipment. We're proposing a 1.8% increase in this budget, which is $3,447. And that primarily accounts for, and we added $10,000 to the line item for maintenance to motor vehicles. The costs of maintaining our fleet have gone up dramatically in the last couple of years with inflation. Costs everything from tires to windshield wipers to actual engine repairs on the vehicles has gotten a lot more expensive. Our fleet is starting to age slightly as well, so repairs are getting a little more costly. We're also seeking $7,235 to add a mobile data terminal and an e-ticketing printer to our department's motorcycle through this budget. That would simply, right now, our motorcycle isn't equipped with anything besides lights and siren, so it's, you know, well-suited for escorts, things for funeral escorts, parades, special events, but isn't very functional for going out on patrol and, you know, having the operator of the motorcycle be able to actually run radar or la, radar or laser and issue tickets. With the addition of the mobile data terminal and the e-ticketing printer, we'd be able to utilize the motorcycle for traffic assignments. You'll notice that I'm, you know, asking for $17,000 more in costs here, but the budget's only going up a little over 3,000. That's because we've discovered substantial savings in the costs of actual, of our cellular costs to connect all of our cruisers through FirstNet, which is our cellular provider. The expenses for that have actually decreased significantly in the past couple of years, which is a small glimmer of hope. I'm gonna pass this on to the deputy chief now if nobody has any other questions.
For the, excuse me, for the vehicle maintenance, do you go out for bids with the different garages in town to service the vehicles to see if we could get a better price, or do we use one standard company, garage?
So, no, we use several different garages in town. They all actually get a piece of the pie, and we rotate a lot of the fleet work through some of the various garages in town. When we do have accidents that require body damage, we rotate which business in town actually receives our business to repair the vehicle.
Thank you.
I have the very difficult slides, as you can see. The, for the traffic budget, it is going up 12%, which is only $840 in the grand scheme of things, but it's for electricity because our traffic signals and our new LPR cameras that are, the 10 that have been put out, require, just the cost of electricity has gone up. So in this one, that's where we're seeing that increase for that budget, in that budget. The next one is the, oh, the animal control budget. 22% increase, which is a total of $21,382. Again, like the chief said, under the administrative budget, their union contract has increased their wages by 2.25%. So that, some of that reflects that in their salaries or hurt the two salaries. So we currently, last fiscal, we had a full-time and a part-time animal control officer. Our full-time animal control officer was diagnosed with cancer and was out for an extended period of time, very sick. During that time, our part-time animal control officer really stepped up. She had to kind of just do it on her own and learn. We sent her to training. She has a background in kind of like rescue, and when she was initially hired, she was working with the full-time and really kind of learning it. She's really shown to us her, her worth and how well that she's been working out. When our animal control officer came back in October, we were able to, we had a savings and we were able to keep her throughout this fiscal, our part-time animal control officer throughout this fiscal year, so through June 30th, and we have two full-time. We've realized for those, these past few months that it's really the need for two full-time animal control officers is there. We do have, they have two different backgrounds, one in rescue, one in true animal control and working together. We've seen where they're really been able to kind of grow it. They, we get more Amazon packages delivered through a wish list at the Police Department for the animal shelter than, maybe my house, it's, it's kind of close. But so what we, she's really done a great job, and we would really like to keep her. We don't want her to have to go back to part-time and maybe begin looking somewhere else because she really is marketable, have been doing this job since July-ish. So this does show the increase to make her full-time for this fiscal, this next fiscal year, which is an increase of $20,459. We would obviously reevaluate at that time if the need is still there for us to be, have a need to have two animal control, but right now, we are asking to be able to keep two full-time animal control officers. Question?
Excuse me, the $20,459, this was one of my questions for the front sheets. The assistant or the part-timer, she's in for a total, I believe it's a $44,000. So this 20 is part of that 44 to make her full-time?
Yes.
So in other words, she was only making $20,000 as part-time?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I need, the clarification. Thank you.
Of course.
Do both animal control officers work the same shift?
So they, we have covered seven days a week, having the two, so they work, they both work eight-hour shifts. Our first, more senior, she works six to two, Monday through Friday, and the part-time, who is now full-time, she works Tuesday through Sunday, so she covers...
Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday through Sunday, and she works 10 to 6, so that we have this bigger time period that we have somebody on duty, we wouldn't have to hire, you know, call in somebody in overtime. When she was part-time, she worked 2 to 6, so we were able to kind of keep that same 12-hour span with the two of them working and then both of them working on the weekends, able to, if we have dogs at the shelter, feed the dogs and also respond for calls for service of any animals on the weekend where it's not costing us overtime. And the last budget is the communications budget. This is a 5% increase for a total of $34,532. Again, it's a 2.25% raise for all of communications personnel. That's reflected in that number, and we're also looking to restructure the staffing. So what we have found is that we currently have six full-time and five part-time dispatchers, and we have three per diems. That the turnover in the part-time has been pretty high, whether it's individuals leaving for different, for full-time jobs or it didn't work out with their full-time job, this is a second job. We have had some that just didn't work out, and we have terminated their employment prior to their probation ending. We feel that if we can have seven full-time and three part-time, we would be able to better staff, especially the midnight shift. That's where we would put three of the full-times. Obviously, the midnight shift is a harder shift to staff, so we would have less overtime being, occurring during that shift, so it'd be easier to fill the day and the evening shift. We think that this would help, just with the turnover, having only three, and then also, again, being able to reduce some of the overtime costs that we're currently seeing. We would still have the per diems there to assist and to help out. Currently, many of our part-time staff do work full-time hours because that's how much of a need there is currently with, we have about two that we could hire part-time. This would allow us to now only have to hire one part-time moving forward to fill vacancies. Okay?
Just wanted to brief the council real quick on the revenue that the Police Department does bring in annually. We do apply for and get awarded several grants every year. I bring this slide to you just to let you know, I'm not just here with my handout, but letting you know, we do work diligently to go after funds that are available through different grant opportunities. Every year, we apply through the Department of Transportation for federal pass-through grants for driving while intoxicated funds, distracted driving funds, which are your, you know, the cellphone-in-hand enforcement, click-it-or-ticket funds. This year in particular, we've already received $3,634 for distracted driving funds and $3,500 for click-it-or-ticket funds. As you probably know, we have been awarded $3375,000 to do a systems upgrade for our radio communications equipment, and we have two grants, grant applications pending, one which has been approved, we just don't have the funds yet, and that's $35,000 for crime suppression grant, which would be able to bolster our patrols. This is, this money came available through the state, I believe it was American Rescue Plan funds in response to the increased amount of motor vehicle thefts and crime that occurred as a result of COVID, so we'd be able to go put additional cars on specifically for crime suppression. Hopefully, that money does come through soon. We've also applied for and approval is pending for $113,000, and it's basically a reimbursement grant for the money we recently spent on refreshing our body camera and dash cameras. That's through the Office of Policy and Management. Last year, our records division brought in just under $30,000 for permits and reports. These permits are probably the most money is through firearm permits, but also through vendor permits and, you know, all the other various types of permits that our records department provides, as well as all of the reports. This year to date, we're just under 12,000 currently. Our extra duty brings in quite a bit of pay to the town. Last year, the town netted about $163,000 from police extra duty. As you know, that's the, last year was a 30% stipend that the town assesses on top of extra duty fees. With the hiring of extra duty solutions, that is now 21%. As you can see, the number's gone up quite a bit already in this fiscal year. We have been extremely busy in extra duty, and that's primarily because of the fiber optics that have been, being strung through town. We're at about $232,000 already in this fiscal year. Any questions on revenue at all?
Couple of quick, quick questions. The, the service that we, I guess we pay about 9% to relate to the extra duties to help kind of deal with all the administrative side. If I recall, at the time, there were comments made that there was a lot of unbilled time from prior months, prior years, I'm not sure exactly what it was. Did we see kind of an uptick on billing and collecting a lot of those kind of older outstanding?
So I'll refer that to Sue in a moment, but the good news moving forward with extra duty solutions, they assume that liability?
Yep.
Which is great, as far as our collections at this time?
The older money is still coming in right now, really, absolutely.
And the other question I had was the grant that you applied for related to the body cameras. If or when we do receive that grant, what ends up happening to the money? Does that end up going back to the Police Department? Does it stay in the general fund? What's kind of the...
Yeah, that would, that would go straight, I'm assuming, to the general fund.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Chief, could you explain just a little bit more about the crime suppression grants and just exactly like what, what would that money go towards?
So that would go towards the hiring of police officers on overtime for the specific purpose of crime suppression and trying to target motor vehicle theft in extra patrols in high-crime areas. So we'd be doing, you know, a, it's kind of a heat map assessment of where our biggest crime problems are, and you're, we're talking mainly convenience stores, our commercial auto dealership area for catalytic converters, and putting on extra patrols for the purpose of crime prevention and apprehension for those type of thefts and larcenies.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your support, and it's always been our pleasure to, to serve this community, and thank you for hearing us this evening.
Any other questions, Rachel?
I have a number of other questions that I just didn't want to interrupt your presentation. I was curious about the, the police accountability laws and what are some of the details of those laws that you think have led us to need more officers?
So the, the police accountability law, which was passed in 2020, there, I mean, it is a huge bill with numerous different parts to it. There are several unfunded mandates that got included in this legislation. The requirement of accreditation is one of them. Luckily, we are already accredited. However, the means in which accreditation is done now is going to be electronic rather than paper, so we're having to transfer everything that we have into a digital environment. So our accreditation assessment, a lot of that is going to be done remotely rather than having assessors come on scene and reviewing all of our files. We have to submit them electronically to the Police Officers and Standards Training Council through software called Power DMS, which is one of our budgeted software subscriptions. The requirement to have dash cameras and body cameras was legislated in that bill, both of which we did currently have, but again, that is technology. We were fortunate, the fact that we didn't have to put out a huge expenditure right when that bill came because we were already ahead of the curve in the area of cameras, but many of that technology is just meeting the end of its life right now, and we have to refresh it. That's why we signed new contracts this past year. And jump in at any time, Renee, what do you think of any?
With that, obviously, the community is more aware of body cameras and dash cameras now, and the request for, the FOI request for both of those have increased. So we actually have an officer who has to do, that has to go through and make sure, so that takes some time. So having, and maybe administrative person, having an extra officer where we can have an administrative sergeant officer to be able to take on some of these tasks and take it off of the other people, we're wearing many hats. That is where another one of the requirements is actually causing a body to have to do additional work.
Yeah, we actually had to pull an officer off of patrol and assign them to our professional standards division about a year and a half. No problem. To, to handle all these administrative tasks. To, to handle all these administrative tasks. And, you know, in all honesty, I almost need two. There's that much work to do administratively compared to what there used to be five to 10 years ago.
Could I continue? Some more questions. I read the Town Times and I always look at the arrest section. So I'm wondering about, has there been an increase in crime? It seems like maybe there has been, or different types of crime. Do you feel like that, that's a concern and another reason why you want more officers?
So the, the request for more officers is not due to an increase in crime. We, we certainly saw a spike in crime in 2020 and 2021. The trend is improving this year. The crime stats in almost all categories, with the exception of, of some of the minor larcenies, has been dropping. So that is good news. You know, once the economy starts improving and everybody's back at work, kids are back in school, crime tends to drop. The increase in officers primarily is to provide some bench players on patrol and increase the amount of officers that we can put out on the road during any given shift. Having more bench players on our shifts will reduce our overtime costs as well. Because if we only have three out there, and one of them takes a sick day, a vacation day, a personal day, or we have to reassign them for training, generally speaking, it is backfilled with overtime. Having another body assigned to that shift, that overtime wouldn't need to get spent.
And, and then additionally, having more officers allows us to police in a way the community want, dictates how we want to be police, not just being 911-driven, where we're just calls for service, there's only three officers on an evening shift, it's busy, they're going call-to-call-to-call. They're not able to do those extra things, you know, watching, like the chief had said, watching the stop signs, the motor vehicle, you know, even attending, you know, some community events, all that other stuff that the community always loves and we're able to put on Facebook when we can. We have the Girl Scouts come to the police department. But it's all those little things that an extra officer allows for us to do. And we're able to really listen to the community saying, this is a problem in my area, and put dedicated resources there, whether it's the motorcycle or traffic, you know, car. We did just start the traffic unit, which is just officers who are kind of doing extra. And we are seeing an increase in that. But if they knew they didn't have to go to call-to-call and could just focus even for a little bit, even for a couple hours, it would definitely increase the visibility that the community is seeing with the police department, too.
One of our largest complaints that come in from the citizens of this town are all traffic-related.
Yes.
Speeding, stop sign violations, and, and red light running. Those are the three big ones. And they're the most difficult for us to address, just having three officers on the road, especially the fact that the vast amount of the violations occur during commuting hours, which is also our busiest time for actual calls for service, which, you know, our, our three officers are going to calls for service during that time and generally not available for traffic. So if we were able to have extra bodies on the road, we could have them actually doing the traffic enforcement to, you know, handle the, those complaints that are coming in as well. And many of these complaints are coming in in actual neighborhoods, which, you know, it's harder to get our officers into the neighborhoods during those times.
One last comment. Many, many years ago, one of my dogs was picked up. He was running around, he'd gotten free and was running around loose. And it was a Friday afternoon, and the animal control officer went home. And so we had to stay, you know, over the weekend. And so that was very hard for all of us. So I really liked the idea of having somebody there all weekend. So I think that's a great idea.
Who's next? Gary?
I'd say with all this extra duty overtime with the fiber and all that, you see any of the guys getting burnt out at all? And it would probably cause more overtime in their regular shifts.
I don't, I don't think we saw that. Luckily, we have mutual aid agreements with several surrounding communities for extra duty. So that overtime is entirely voluntary for our officers. They don't want to work it, they don't have to. And Extra Duty Solutions contacts our mutual aid partners and can have officers from other towns in the area come in for those traffic assignments.
I know, I've been seeing a lot more officers over in Thomason now.
Yeah, it ebbs and flows. So where we were, you know, it spiked and there was too much work-
Yeah.
-for the amount of officers who could work it. And it's kind of come back down a little bit more. So it's a little bit slower. So, which is good. It's a forced break. So they can't, you know, it's, you gotta take a moment, you gotta have a mental health break because there's no, there is no extra work. And, you know, some officers feel like it's the holidays, I wanna, I wanna do some extra shifts to be able to, you know, wait for those credit card bills to come in.
Chief, you may want to mention you do have policies in place that address that issue so that you don't end up with an officer who's burnt out, maybe at a high level. I don't know if you remember off the top of your head. Some of the, the amount of hours that officers are allowed to work, their mandate, mandated breaks of time, and that's in policy.
Yeah, officers, they're not allowed to work more than 16 hours in a 24-hour period. And, and that's a rarity, that they do that much time in, in a 24-hour period. But we don't allow more than 16 hours unless there's an actual emergency situation that we have to call them in for. Generally speaking, if they're due on, on shift that day, they would get a four-hour extra duty job. So they'd be working, most officers work 12 hours in a 24-hour period if they are working extra duty.
I wrote everything down. I thought we were going to go through this sheet. On the records clerk, how many records clerks do we have in the office?
We have two.
Two. Okay. So the 99,000, that's for two, not one. That's the total.
For, for the administrative budget?
Excuse me?
Oh, you're in the-
Personnel.
Yep.
That's correct. That, that reflects two records clerks.
Two people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Cause that just popped right out when I saw that one. And you explained the, the training and the mileage. Patrol officers, the other compensation. I think you already explained that one, too. I know this is going to be a crazy question, but is $1,500 enough for medical bills for the dog? I know what it costs to go to the vet today.
So, you know, that, that is a, I look at that line item as, just like overtime, you never know if it's gonna work. There are some years where it's more money than we need. And there's other years where one vet visit will blow that money out completely, especially if they need surgery. And last year, last year was one of those years where there, our patrol dog ate a rubber Kong and had to have surgery to remove the, remove these pieces. It would cause a blockage. And they had to do surgery to remove the blockage. So that was very expensive. And this year, we've had no problems whatsoever and have hardly used the money at all, except for a well visit.
And he's not allowed to have a Kong.
Yes.
I know this is gonna sound crazy. And I don't know if the towns are allowed to do it. But can you take out the animal insurance where it would cover if you needed surgeries?
Trupanion.
Pardon?
Trupanion.
Yeah.
One of those companies.
I don't know if it's, the cost is worth, if the dog doesn't get injured or sick or anything, but you got to cover it.
Yeah, that is a good point that we should look into. And we, we hadn't done that. So we'll make a note.
It was just a thought.
Yeah.
How many dollars, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Continue.
Oh. Okay. Yes, that one, that one. The compensation. Thank you very much. That was my last one.
How many animals typically run through animal control in a given month, just out of curiosity?
I know at the, at the pound right now, we have three or four?
Four.
We have four animals at the pound. You know, that requires daily feeding and cleaning. And our animal control officers work diligently on placement for those animals through various rescue groups. And as far as call volume for animal control, we're a fairly busy community with animal control. And, you know, we get certain problematic dogs that are involved in bite situations that can dominate quite a bit of their time. We had a terrible incident this past summer with a dog bite that bit a young girl, causing significant injuries. And that, you know, a single incident like that could be a good amount of work for an animal control officer to deal with. They, they do stay quite busy. I don't have the number exactly what their call volume is every year, but there's a lot of roaming dogs that they deal with. They deal with the registrations, making sure the dogs all get registered. They work with the town clerk. So there's work.
My other line of questioning is dealing with the salaries. Under the sergeant line item, it's going down roughly 80,000 or so. Is there one less sergeant?
Yeah. So we're proposing for the next fiscal year to, we currently have a structure in the department. We have three lieutenants and seven sergeants. We just conducted a lieutenant exam. In fact, it was the first one we did in over 10 years in the Watertown Police Department due to the sudden recent retirement of Lieutenant Pat Gerard. In fact, we're promoting a new lieutenant next Wednesday. We have two other sergeants that took that exam that are on that list. And we have Lieutenant Tim Gavallis, who will be retiring at the end of 2024. I'm proposing that we bump up our lieutenants to four lieutenants during this next fiscal year to acclimate that lieutenant to the position prior to Lieutenant Gavallis's retirement. So for just the fiscal year of 23, 24, it would increase our lieutenants to four and decrease our sergeants to six. So we're not looking to increase the amount of supervisors in the department, just shift one of those sergeants to lieutenant temporarily for this one fiscal year, and would likely go back to three lieutenants and seven sergeants in the following fiscal year.
And the detectives, they only went up about 30 grand. I'm assuming that's just wages and the-
Yeah, I believe that would just be-
Change in the number.
Correct.
And then the patrol officers is going up roughly 100,000. It seems like that only accounts for like one new officer versus two.
So the actual patrol officer line item went from 1,918,184 up to 2,11,058. That is strictly contractual increases in salary.
Oh, sorry. And there's a line below it for the new-
A line below it would be for the new ones. You can, you can see the department recommended was 227,670. That would be for three patrol officers. And under the town manager recommended of 151,780 would reflect two officer salaries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I just have a quick question, too. On the two new officers, would those be officers that would be going through the academy? Or could, would that be somebody coming from maybe another town?
So we-
Would the number change?
Excellent question. We strive to hire certified lateral officers. We always attempt that first, prior to doing new entries. It does simply, doesn't always work. The last time we put an application process out, we got three applicants only for certified officers. We have given a conditional offer to one of them. The other two are really not qualified for our agency through an initial background. So it's hit or miss. If we do bring in a lateral, the new contract that got signed allows us, if they have at least five years of experience, we can bring them right in at step two of pay. And that is the number you see reflected before you is step two pay. If we had to bring in a new entry officer that's not certified, the pay would be less. However, we are dealing with six months of the police academy and four months of field training before we'd be able to get them on the road. And if we did have to hire a new entry, we would not enjoy any overtime savings or have them available really for patrol until the following fiscal year or very late into this fiscal year. From the time we get authorized to hire, sometimes it's six months before we can even obtain an academy seat. They're highly sought after.
That, that was my exact thought. The time that it takes to get them through the academy, you'd be talking about the next budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't think we need a vote, but this meeting is adjourned.
All right.